Welcome to the May 8th, Wednesday, May 8th, Council meeting. Call it to order, if you would please, stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silent prayer.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Schlieba, take the roll call, please.
Mr. Beatry.
Present.
Ms. Carnes.
Present.
Mr. Dabney.
Present.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Present.
Mr. Hamilton.
Present.
Mr. Prez Valinsky.
Present.
Ms. Silvis.
Present.
Mr. Simmons.
Present.
And Mr. Stimling. We have nine present and no one's absent.
Thank you, Ms. Schlieba. Approval of the minutes from our regular meeting of April the 16th. Are there any corrections? Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Support. Motion to approve by Councilman Fitzpatrick and seconded by Councilman Dabney. Oh, I'm sorry, Councilman Beatry. Councilman Beatry made the initial motion. And you seconded it? Okay, alright. Signify, are all those in approval of the minutes, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, nay, minutes are approved. Any reports of standing committees? Councilman Dabney.
Alright. The May 8th Finance Committee meeting was called to order tonight at 6:06 PM by Chairman Dabney to review the claims since our last meeting. Committee members Beatry and Prez Valinsky were present as well as Councilmen Fitzpatrick and Simmons. City Controller Richard Murphy was unable to attend. Claims reviewed total forty-four thousand nine hundred fifty-five dollars and eighty-two cents from the Riverboat Fund, eighteen thousand five hundred sixty-six dollars and forty-five cents from the Boyd Development Fund, and a payment of five hundred forty-eight thousand four hundred thirty-one dollars and eighty-one cents for the ESG Savings Project for a total claims docket of six hundred eleven thousand nine hundred forty-five dollars and eight cents. Although no further outstanding issues to discuss, Councilman Beatry moved to recommend approval of the docket with a second by Councilman Prez Valinsky, and the motion was approved unanimously. The meeting was adjourned at 6:10 PM. And the summary of claims goes as follows, from the Riverboat Fund. Enterprise Rent-A-Car, one thousand seventy-eight dollars and ninety-one cents. Hassan Associates, fourteen thousand three hundred one dollars thirty-five cents. Magro's Inc., four thousand six hundred fifty dollars and thirty cents. Motorola Solutions Inc., twenty-four thousand nine hundred twenty-five dollars and twenty-six cents. For a total from the Riverboat Fund of forty-four thousand nine hundred fifty-five dollars and eighty-two cents. From Boyd Development Fund, Barry McDonald, three thousand eight hundred twenty-five dollars even. The Beecher Newspaper, seventy-four dollars and twenty-five cents. Corporate Payment System, sixty-four dollars and sixty-two cents. And We Create Media for fourteen thousand six hundred two dollars and fifty-eight cents. For a total from the Boyd Development Fund of eighteen thousand five hundred sixty-six dollars and forty-five cents. And once again, the ESG payment register was five hundred forty-eight thousand four hundred thirty-one dollars and eighty-two cents. Once again, for a total docket of six hundred eleven thousand nine hundred forty-five dollars. And that concludes the Finance Committee report.
Thank you, Councilman Dabney. Are there any other reports of standing committees? I don't believe so. Reports of special or select committees? I don't believe there's any reports. I just want, for the, for the record, the council did have a joint workshop with the Park Department back on April the 18th in reference to the Smoke-Free City-Owned Parks and Playgrounds Ordinance. And the minutes and notes were handed into the city's clerk's office as required. Any reports of other city officers and departments? I don't see anyone here this evening. And the claims docket. As mentioned by Councilman Dabney, Fund 2042, which is the Riverboat. Claims of forty-four thousand nine hundred fifty-five dollars and eighty-two cents. And Fund 2032, which is Boyd Development, of eighteen thousand five hundred sixty-six dollars and forty-five cents. And payment to ESG Savings Project of five hundred forty-eight thousand four hundred thirty-one dollars and eighty-one cents. Is there a motion to pay the claims?
Motion to pay claims.
Motion to pay the claims by Councilman Beatry and seconded by Councilman Dabney. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, nay. Claims are paid. Ms. Schlieba, are there any petitions before us this evening?
There were no petitions received.
Thank you. Communications?
Correspondence received in the clerk's office on April 15th, 2019, April 22nd, 2019, and April 29th, 2019, from DLZ for their weekly activity report regarding the ESG Energy Project. The correspondence was also received in the clerk's office on April 30th, 2019, from Health Communities of LaPorte County, from Jennifer Olson, Executive Director. Correspondence was received in the clerk's office on May 1st, 2019, from Controller Richard Murphy regarding the TIF Management Annual Report of the Redevelopment Commission. And a correspondence was received in the clerk's office on May 2nd, from John T. Kirk, DLZ, regarding the Energy Savings Project.
Thank you, Ms. Schlieba. And, no, there are no resolutions for us this evening. Ms. Schlieba, if you would please, our first ordinance on first reading by title only without objection?
An ordinance on first reading by title only approving additional appropriation in the budget of the Riverboat Fund to provide funding for one hot box for pavement patching for Michigan City Central Services, and this is introduced by Councilwoman Carnes.
And does the author have anything she'd like to add?
Uh, yeah, says title would suggest this is for some apparatus for pavement patching for central services. And we did receive a letter of support from the mayor for this. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone from the public that wishes to speak on this ordinance? Anyone from the public which to speak on this ordinance? Anyone from the public which to speak on this ordinance? Are there any council comments on this ordinance? Any council comments? Any council comments? This ordinance will be held over for a second reading at our next meeting. Ms. Schlieba, our first reading, our first ordinance on second reading by title only without objection?
An ordinance on second reading by title only, creating Article 3 in Chapter 58 entitled Smoke-Free City-Owned Parks and Playgrounds, and this is introduced by Councilwoman Carnes.
And does the author have anything she'd like to add? Councilwoman Carnes?
Uh, yes. So we, as you mentioned earlier, we did have a joint workshop with the Park Board on this on April, April 18th. And I've received many favorable comments based on some suggestions that were made at that meeting. I would like to amend that ordinance. And I have passed out, I know there's like two amendments that were passed out. Mine is the one with the red underlines. And essentially what I did is I removed the language for land underwater, which some people thought was confusing. And I also took under advisement the suggestion that possibly the fine should be seventy-five dollars rather than a hundred dollars. And so I would like to move that we amend this ordinance.
Support. Okay, there's a motion, not a motion, but proposals for amendments by Councilwoman Carnes and seconded by Councilman Beatry. Is there anyone from the public that wishes to speak on these amendments? Yeah, no, we're speaking on the amendments right now. Okay. Wish to speak or no? Okay, we're speaking on your amendments right now. Anyone from the public which to speak on the amendments? Anyone from the public which to speak on the amendments? Any council comments on the amendments? Any council comments on the amendments? Any council comments? Okay, with the council, we can, we, the way I see it, we can vote on these amendments all in one package or vote on them individually? Would the council prefer to vote on them all in one package? Okay? That's a general consent, so we will vote on it all in one package. No more council comments? With that being said, Ms. Schlieba, on the vote, please.
Ms. Carnes?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Outstanding.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Prez Valinsky?
Yes.
Ms. Silvis?
Aye.
Mr. Simmons?
Aye.
Mr. Stimling? Mr. Beatry?
Aye.
And Mr. Dabney?
Aye.
We have eight in favor and one abstain.
Thank you, Ms. Schlieba. I, at this time, also wish to make an amendment to this, to the ordinance for Smoke-Free City-Owned Parks and Playgrounds. And what my amendment is, is under sports, arena, and recreational areas, where it's under blue, if everyone has the copy with the blue lettering, okay? It says, "Accept the Michigan City Municipal Public Golf Course." I want to take the golf course out of this and let it stand alone where this ordinance would not have any effect on the golf course. Now, my reasons, my reasons behind that. And I believe they're very, I believe they're very legitimate, excuse me. The reasons behind it. Number one, when we had the workshop, this came up when the workshop was over. And the golf course, I think, was kind of a second thought, and nobody really thought about it. So I think it's important that we take a serious look at it and have an open mind about it. The golf course, I believe it was, yeah, it was the next day after our workshop that the word got out to the people that are members there. And there were thirty members that had already joined for the year, but apparently they're smokers, they like to smoke. They had said that if this ban, if the smoking ban goes into ordinance form and into law, that next year they will not be joining the Michigan City Municipal Golf Course. Some people could probably say, well, that's, that's their choice, you know, too bad. If they don't want to join, they don't have to join. The issue is, is that you're talking of thirty golfers that spend approximately four hundred dollars a year for membership fees. So we're looking at in excess of ten thousand dollars a year to, we would be losing and that the city would have to subsidize the golf course, which at this time, and I didn't pass it out, but I will, when I complete my comments, is that the golf course is already losing revenue every year. So I think that's an important thing that we should consider. I golf, and I've been out to the municipal golf course a number of times. And I've been out to the municipal golf course for golf outings, a lot of social events or clubs in Michigan City that have benefit golf courses or golf matches, and even, even the mayor has his annual golf fundraiser out at the golf course. And I'm sure that there's individuals that smoke in that and maybe have, have a cigar or two that they like to go out and enjoy the afternoon. And not once, not once have I ever seen or heard of anyone complain about smoking that takes place on the golf course. Not one time. And I am sixty-four years old, and I've been golfing for forty years, and I've never had one individual come up to me and say, there's cigarette butts on tee number five, or I see a cigar butt on the green on number five. I've never heard that. So, and another important issue. Just like in the parks, but on the golf, not, not just like on the parks, because on a golf course, you don't have, and I know the concern is about small children, and small children picking up cigarette butts and being exposed to the smoke from cigars or cigarettes. There are not small children on a golf course. And if there are, and if they're with their, generally they're with their parents, and when I, what I mean small, I'm talking about children that are ten years old that can actually swing a golf court, a golf club. You know, if they're with their parents and their parents decide they want to smoke, well, you know, that's their choice. But you're outside. You're outside on this huge golf course, and I don't know how the smoke is actually going to affect you, because I never had gotten that information as requested, and I know Councilman Dabney requested it also, what effect or how far the smoke has to be away or close to you when it affects your, your lungs. So, with that being said, what I'm going to do is get the paperwork out here that actually has the... Here we go. There you go, Councilman Dabney, if you would pass that down that way, please. Pass that down that way. You got enough? One more, Councilman? There's that? There you go. The bottom? Okay. Can I have one just to read off and then I'll give this to you? Okay, thank you. Alright, so starting in 2012, the golf course was in the red, twenty-three thousand dollars. In 2013, in the red, thirty-three thousand. In 2014, in the red, ten thousand. 2015, it was in the black, six thousand. 2016, in the black, two thousand. 2017, in the red, by twenty thousand dollars. And for, in 2018, don't know the exact reasons why, but on this report here, which I received a week ago, they were in the red, seventy-nine thousand dollars. So the income at the golf course is actually going down. So I don't think by including the golf course in this ordinance is the right thing to do. It's the right thing to do. So, with that being said, we will now open it up to the public, if anyone wishes to comment on the amendments?
I'd like to comment on the amendment.
The council part? Oh, yeah, no, no. Yeah, 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 yeah. We have to make, is there a motion for a second? Support. Okay, there's a second?
You need a motion?
With that, yeah. So with that being said, now we open it up to the public, and then we bring it back to the council. Yep? So, is there anyone from the public that wishes to speak on this amendment? Yeah, and your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, I am Jennifer Olson, I'm the Executive Director of Healthy Communities of LaPorte County. I really commend the council on talking about tobacco issues. We know that this is a marathon, you know, not a sprint in tobacco. We are always trying to talk about smoke-free air. Even in the ordinance, it talks about that there's, it's a public health issue. And we did the beach cleanup on Earth Day, and we saw the litter from tobacco. We know tobacco products are the number one littered item. So we know the effects that has. I know just from working in state policy, anytime we do make exemptions, it's a lot harder to go back then and include it. So we just advocate for including, you know, all or nothing, basically, oftentimes. Just because it's so hard to then go back and make a really good argument for why something that was excluded was included. And again, I really commend the council on considering the public health impact on secondhand smoke. This is what we do every single day. We are the funded partner through the Indiana State Department of Health. We have provided you packets of information on smoke-free air in this community. There is a lot to be said for smoke-free air. We assisted the Parks Department, and there's three parks that are currently smoke-free. We insisted, we assisted them in that resolution, and that was because there was organized play. I'm not quite familiar with the golf course, I don't golf. I would encourage that it's included. But again, and I talked about this at the workshop, that for healthy communities, we are really looking at, you know, for us, it's who are we exposing to secondhand smoke? And in our county, we're exposing workers to secondhand smoke every day. So why we appreciate and will support an ordinance that, that does cover smoke-free parks, especially when we were at the beach cleanup. I, running a tobacco program, I've done a lot of cleanups. I've, we oftentimes don't even publicize it. Our staff will just go out and clean up a park, will, you know, or the school systems will clean up the, the school systems and dispose of those tobacco products. And I was really surprised here at the number of cigarello or cigar tips that were discarded at Washington Park, the Park Beach, which was very, I know that different communities, we have different tobacco use, right? So, in, in the city of LaPorte, we're really having an issue with electronic cigarettes. In some of the rural areas, we're having an issue, and especially with kids using smoke-free tobacco. Michigan City, that was, I always knew that cigarettos were an issue. I also know that this is also a device that is used as to deliver marijuana as well. But I just have to say that the, the cigar tips that we picked up at Washington Park Beach were just, it was astronomical. I've been in tobacco control for a long time, I'm very passionate about it. I could not believe the number of cigar tips that we picked up at that beach. And they're little plastic tips, they're not going anywhere. Those, I mean, you're talking thousands and thousands of years for those to break down. So I, I support the ordinance, I support smoke-free parks, but we also have fifteen hundred people at the casino, again, that, you know, and I said this before, that are exposed to secondhand smoke. So while this is a great starting place, I really challenge our community to look at protecting worker health and making sure that people that need jobs in this community, that can get jobs in this community, that can have insurance, are able to go to work every day and breathe smoke-free air. That's what's important to us. We know, there's, you know, the CDC report on, on tobacco came out fifty years ago. Tobacco is the only public health issue that we really do know how to solve. And one of the ways that we solve it is with smoke-free air ordinances. So until, for healthy communities, until we really look at every worker in this county being protected from secondhand spoke, smoke exposure, you know, we're just not doing our job. It is, it is up to us as leaders in the community to make sure that people are able to go to work and are not damaging their health. And we know that, you know, the casino here is, I mean, it's done wonderful things for our community, right? I mean, we're reading all the money that's coming from it, and I, I understand everything that's at play with that. But also, we have many, many people that they can't find another job. You know, the casino is on the bus route. The casino has, you know, you're, you're getting good insurance. You have a woman that goes into the casino and is working and has, is covered by their health coverage, and then becomes pregnant, and now is exposed to secondhand smoke, and the fetus is exposed to secondhand smoke. And we have a very high infant mortality rate in this community. So I just, I just have to encourage, I love this, this is a great conversation. We are your local resource on tobacco control. We are all things tobacco, if you need us, we're here. But I do encourage people to start thinking about all of the people in this county. The state law is not covering private clubs, tobacco shops, bars, and casinos. And until we do that, we really are not protecting the health of LaPorte County citizens and the citizens of Michigan City. So I appreciate this, I think this is a great first step. We will support it. Anything we can do to support smoke-free air here, we will do it absolutely. Please use us as a resource. But let's also just start, it's, this is not something that would happen overnight, but it's time to start thinking about it and having the conversation.
Okay, ma'am, I do have one question, if I could, if I could ask it, and...
Hopefully I know the answer.
Hard?
I said hopefully I know the answer.
Yeah, we'll see. But, but anyway, it was, it was the same question that I had when we had the workshop, and I think Councilman Dabney was concerned about it too. We talk about, you know, secondhand smoke and the effect it has on people. But, you know, I'm not, I know that inside, smoking, I'm totally against that. But, you know, on the outside, you know, how far away?
I, I did send...
Let me finish.
I'm sorry.
I mean, you know, how far away does a person have to be from another person to where the smoke doesn't affect that person? I mean, is five feet okay? Is three feet okay? Do you understand what I'm saying?
I sent you an email, maybe you didn't receive it.
I know you sent, you sent, you sent an email, and I got a packet of information, but that information was not in there.
Yeah, I sent it in...
I did not see that.
In the email, from the best that we can determine, and we quoted it from the American for Nonsmokers Rights, it's twenty feet. And if you didn't, I'm sorry, if you didn't receive the email, I, I really did send you an email. I know that was a question that you asked, and I wasn't comfortable at the time giving the answer until I really investigated it, because I appreciate statistics. But it's twenty feet in an outdoor space. So if you're in an outdoor area and somebody is smoking twenty feet away, there, you know, you are breathing in secondhand smoke. And then the CDC says there is no safe level of secondhand smoke. So I wondered, since you didn't reply, I wondered if you actually received the email. I should have followed up again, I'm sorry. And then I did give everybody also a packet, we found some smoke-free outdoors. And so you each have a brochure on smoke-free outdoors as well. So you are exposed to, I mean, you, you know, you can smell it sometimes. You're breathing it in when you're outside. That's why eight feet from the door is the state law. You know, if you can't smoke eight feet from any, any business. And that's just what the, the state passed. But the email that I sent was, it's twenty feet, so you're exposed. And when there's, I mean, obviously, there's a lot of things that go into that, but the, the best we can determine is twenty feet.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public which to speak on these amendments?
Good evening, my name's Randy Durham. The address is 7785 Happy Landing Lane, Michigan City. I'm also your golf course superintendent. I've been at the golf course for roughly thirty-three years. I'd like to speak a little bit about the financial, potential financial impact that this ordinance may incur for us. We have tried hard to increase revenue, limit expenses over the years. And conversations with some of our vendors that cover the entire Midwest area, they're not aware of not one golf course in the area that has a smoking ban. I've been all for trying to set us up as unique as any other facility in the area. This could be a potential way of us being unique, alright? Maybe in a harmful way. Some of the, the numbers that you might have been informed of, of the ten thousand dollars of our, our season pass holders that may decline for the next seasons. Well, you know, if it's twenty-five percent of... Well, you know, if it's twenty-five percent, um, of our customers that are actually smokers, if we lose them, if, the numbers you had was just for season pass only.
Oh, okay.
Okay? If you include the cart packages, the concessions, the golf course merchandise, I mean, we could possibly be two hundred thousand dollars in the hole after this decision's made. So just, please keep that in mind because it's, it's very critical to our golf operation. So, um, if you have any other questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else from the public which to, uh, speak?
Uh, hello, I'm, uh, Tom Orlovsky, longtime Michigan City resident. Uh, yeah, I, uh, I support Mr. Privilinsky and his, um, uh, excluding the golf course from the, uh, the smoking aspect. I think, uh, an important point that needs to be made is just that, look at density of people per square foot on a golf course. I've been out there, I've been golfing there for, I don't know, forty years. Uh, been here all my life and, uh, I think, uh, it being a gentleman's game, there is that respect for that space. You know, you're not gonna have a guy blowing smoke in your face when you're trying to tee you off. I, I think, uh, there, having a smoking ban ordinances, say in, uh, playgrounds, uh, it's, it's a much, much more confined space, even though it is outdoors. Golf courses are a much different proposition and, um, that was a very good point that, uh, Superintendent, Golf Course Superintendent made, that, uh, yeah, I, I cannot think of another course that has a smoking ban or has even seen the necessity to do so. So, uh, that's really all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, any other comments from the public?
Hi, Steve Champagne, two twenty Fogarty Street. Uh, I support your amendment, uh, to exclude the golf course, uh, just primarily because it just feels like going too far to me in terms of government, uh, trying to sort of legislate intelligence, as it were. So I, I would prefer to see people become moderate in usage of things like tobacco. I think that's something that needs to start at home being taught, uh, and not come down from on high, uh, as, as a mandate and, and just sort of trying to push it out of society in, in that fashion. I would rather see it happen intelligently and, and there is an intelligent way to use tobacco as far as I'm concerned and that's, I would rather see things go that direction than constantly see sort of a heavy-handed government approach to forcing it out.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments on the amendments? Having none, the public comment portion is closed. Council comments on the amendments? Councilman Dabney?
Pardon?
Okay. Councilwoman Carnes?
Uh, yes, uh, contrary to what you said, I actually did, uh, realize that this would include the golf courses when I authored this, um, ordinance. Uh, I believe it goes to the fact that we're trying to, uh, uh, denormalize the use of tobacco. Uh, LaPorte County is actually, uh, has a higher percentage of, uh, smokers overall than the state, which is not something to be proud of. Um, as far as your comment about you've never seen anybody, you know, uh, object to somebody smoking a cigar, well, I think if there's no rule against it, I would be pretty reticent to approach a, a man and, uh, ask him to put out his cigar. So, um, I would, uh, urge everyone to reject this amendment and, um, uh, extend this ban to all our city-owned parks, playgrounds, beaches. Thank you.
Any other council comments? Councilman Hamilton?
While we're sitting here, I Googled the PGA's rules and procedures and different courses. The PGA is basically hands-off on this. It's up to the local branches of government to set on their golf courses. There are golf courses on their routine that are non-smoking, but there are ones that are smoking too. That's why I support this because if the PGA is hands-off on a, you know, they know the game better than all of us, I think on golf course, we should probably be hands-off too. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Are there any other comments? Any other counsel or, uh, comments? Having none?
Well, yeah, I...
Councilman Beatry?
I've, I've heard all that's been said and I have, uh, I can see both sides of this. Um, but in, in the end, to me, we're pretty much in agreement that smoking at city-owned public-owned parks and playgrounds is a bad thing and we don't want to see that. I think all of us were pretty much in agree with that when this went through first reading. So we're basically saying you can't smoke on city-owned public areas or playgrounds except for the golf course. And I'm thinking, well, if it's a good idea for all these other parks and playgrounds and recreational areas, why is it not also a good idea for the golf course? And I'm hearing it's because thirty guys won't play golf there anymore, we're gonna lose twelve thousand dollars, which sounds to me like blackmail and it roasts me the wrong way. I'm thinking, is it a good idea or is it not a good idea? And to me, it sounds like a good idea to not have the smoking. I, I do understand what Randy's saying, uh, and it's gonna, it could put him in a difficult situation, but I remember the guy that owns, um, Hammer's Restaurant, Kenny Larson told me the same thing. Uh, I don't wanna ban smoking because I'm gonna lose all my customers. And Kenny has more customers in Hammer's now than he's ever had because he went non-smoking. So I, I don't think for restaurants that went non-smoking, it's hurt them at all. In fact, it's made them more successful. So I, I guess to me, it's just, it's a difficult thing because you're telling people, you aren't gonna allow them to do a thing that's a matter of their personal habit. And, uh, that gets to what Steve Champagne was talking about. Governments maybe shouldn't be making those decisions for people, but it's not a decision that we're making for people. It's make, this decision, we're making it for everybody. It's a public health issue. So I, I think it makes sense. I know it's a tough decision to make, but I, I'm gonna, uh, vote against the Second Amendment. I think if we're gonna have this in all of our public parks and recreational areas, then we're gonna have it in all of our public parks and recreational areas. Thank you.
I, I will, uh, make one comment, is that the, I believe the issue came up to begin with because of the cigarettes found at the beach, the Tipperello tips found at the beach during the cleanup, uh, and, you know, I don't know if cigarette wrappers were found at the beach. I didn't participate in it. Last year I participated in a couple of cleanups and there were cigarette butts found at the beach, always cigarette butts found at the beach and, but what, what my point was when I started this, this, this discussion is that you may have that issue at the park because you have thousands and thousands and thousands of people down there, but at the golf course, that doesn't exist. Now, I don't know how many folks that sit on the council now actually went out to municipal golf course and see how many people are out there, even on a tournament or a, a social outing that somebody may be having. And you don't have the crowds, you don't have the cigarette butts laying out there, you don't have the infiltration of smoke around individuals and the likelihood of somebody being within twenty feet of somebody else or within whatever certain confines that is, it doesn't exist as if it does on the beach. I mean, all you have to do is look at a golf tournament on TV and see the, a massive amount of airspace you have with possibly one golfer and a couple of caddies walking down the fairway and you can tell that it's not gonna be an issue. You know, and, and I understand, you know, well, if we make it for this park, we should make it for that park. Well, then we, then when we have the smoking ban at, uh, the bar down in the park, down in the park, uh, at Gardena Playground, at Patriot Park, well then at that time, why weren't all the city parks included? Why do we wait five years or six years or however long it's been, three years, to now include all the parks? If it was so terrible then, you know, it, it, it's terrible now and everybody should have been included. So I don't, I don't buy that, that. There should be exclusions looked at on a case-by-case basis. So I disagree with Councilman, uh, Beatry's, uh, discussion on this. So with that being said, is there any further council comments? Councilman Dabney?
Making motion to approve the, uh, amendment.
Support. Yeah, it's al, it's already been, yeah, motion made and seconded. So, Ms. Leva, on the vote on the amendment to accept the Michigan City Municipal Public Golf Course or to exempt it from the, uh, ordinance?
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Przbylinski?
Aye.
Ms. Silvas?
Aye.
Mr. Simmons?
Aye.
Mr. Stimley?
Aye.
Mr. Beatry?
Nay.
Mr. Dabney?
Aye.
Ms. Carnes?
Nay.
There are seven in favor and two opposed.
Thank you, Ms. Niall?
I have a question, I have a comment on it.
Pardon?
No, the amendments are passed, I have a comment.
Okay. And now, uh, now that the amendments are over with and we're on second reading on the ordinance, uh, is there any council comment? Okay. Mr. Dabney, go ahead, Councilman.
Yeah, uh, as you all know, up here on the, the council, I was against this, uh, from day one and the reasons, um, that I'll explain those in a second. I like, and I explained this before, I like what it's trying to do in terms of the health, looking out for the health of people and things like that. But the first thing that I brought up was enforcement. Enforcement, do we have the resources and the people to enforce this? Um, I spoke with some actual cops out there and a direct quote I got from one of the cops, this was the, the silliest thing I've heard of in, in a long time. That was just one cop. Uh, we had a committee meeting where the chief of police was there and I'll get to the Park Department Board of Directors as well. The chief of police sat in there and said, basically, we really can't enforce this. Um, so it's an enforcement issue with me, but like I said, I like what it's trying to do in regards to looking out for the people's health, but they're telling us that they couldn't, can't really enforce this. You know, you call somebody, you call the cops on somebody that's smoking down in the park, he may or somebody may or may not ever get there in order to be able to enforce this. Um, then also, this is something, I used to be on the, the Board of Directors for the Park Department and this is something that we took up when I was on the, the Board of the Park Department and it went nowhere. Um, and this comes to us without approval through the Park Department. They are the, the first jurisdiction over all parks and it didn't come out of their board. So I felt like a little bit like we're jumping over the Park Department Board of Directors to bring this here. Um, and they were at the, uh, committee meeting as well. They had one board member out of the four that jumped up and, and spoke that he was in favor of this. Um, so I think it's kind of out of order, uh, in the way it's happening. So you saw me vote yes for the amendments because if this does get down the line and it actually does pass, I think the amendments make it better than what it is now, but I've expressed my reasons for being against it, uh, going forward. So that's all I'd say.
Okay, Councilwoman Carnes?
Uh, yes, I'd like to ask Mr. Meyer if it's required that the Park Board, uh, pass a resolution, uh, concerning this before it comes to the city council?
No, it's not.
Can I comment again, please? And I didn't say it was required, but the normal process is that something like this would come out of the Park Department Board first. I used to be there. That is how it normally works. So no, it's not a requirement that she could jump over the Park Department and bring it here, but the normal process is that it does come out of that Park Department because they have the jurisdiction over all of the parks. That's why they're called the Park and Recreation Department.
Councilwoman Carnes?
Another, another question for Mr. Meyer. Could this, could this, uh, be enforced with just a resolution from the Park Department?
The Park Department could enforce its own regulate, resolutions. I don't know.
But we could not fine anybody for smoking?
No. We, meaning the council, I think.
In the city.
The city?
Okay, any other, uh, council comments on this ordinance? Having none, this will be held over to, for third reading at our next council meeting. Ms. Leva, our next ordinance on second reading by title only without objection?
An ordinance on second reading by title only, creating section twenty-two dash eighty-five and chapter twenty-two of the Michigan City Municipal Code to waive permit fees on city-owned project. And this is introduced by Councilman Stimley.
And, and does the author have anything he would like to add at this time?
I do not.
Thank you, Councilman. Is there anyone from the public that wishes to speak on this ordinance? Anyone from the public which to speak on this ordinance? Anyone from the public which to speak on this ordinance? Are there any council comments? Any council comments on this ordinance? Any council comments on this ordinance? This ordinance will be held over for third reading at our next council meeting. Ms. Leva, our next ordinance on second reading by title only without objection?
An ordinance on second reading by title only. An ordinance vacating portions of a public alley within the city of Michigan City located adjacent to twenty-four oh four East Michigan Boulevard. This is introduced by Councilman Simmons and Councilwoman Carnes.
And do the authors have anything that they would like to add? Councilwoman Carnes?
Uh, yes, uh, you're presented with a, an amended ordinance, uh, adding the Department of the, of Water Works, uh, granting them appropriate utility easement. And I believe also there were some amended, um, drawings that were added to it.
Okay, did every council person get a copy of that? Did you? I don't remember getting a copy of that. Were they handed out this evening? Do you have an extra copy by chance? And where exactly are the amendments made at? Councilwoman?
In the whereas clause, the last whereas clause, the Department of Water Works was added to grant appropriate utility easements. And there are also some additions in the exhibit and I would ask Mr. McDonald to comment further on, on those exhibits.
Second last page. Second last page, there's a drawing of the water easement and the, the bottom leg addition.
Okay.
There was a water line there that people didn't really realize was there until, just recently.
Okay.
It's been covered by a, by a easement, so they're granting easements.
Okay, there's been a, uh, proposal for amendments from Councilwoman Carnes. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Simmons. Is there anyone here from the public that wishes to speak on the amendments? Oh, yeah, and we also have a formal public hearing, uh, this evening on this ordinance. Pardon? Okay. Uh, with that being said, so we'll have the formal public hearing. Uh, is there anyone here that wishes to speak on this? Is there anyone here? We gotta take care of the amendments first, I believe, okay? Is there anyone here that wishes to speak on the amendments? Anyone here wishes to speak on the amendments to this ordinance? Anyone wish to speak on the amendments? Having none, are there any council comments on the amendments? Having none, are there any council comments on the amendments? Any council comments? Any council comments? Ms. Schaliba, on the vote for the amendments, please?
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Preszbalinski?
Aye.
Ms. Silvas?
Aye.
Mr. Simmons?
Aye.
Mr. Stimley?
Aye.
Mr. Beatry?
Aye.
Mr. Dabney?
Aye.
Ms. Carnes?
Aye.
And Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
There are nine in favor and none opposed.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Schaliba. And at this time, this opens the formal public hearing. Uh, is there anyone from the public that wishes to speak on this ordinance?
Good evening, Mr. President.
Good evening.
Members of the council. My name is Barry McDonald. I'm an attorney here in Michigan City with offices at six oh one Franklin Street. Um, I am here again before you and thank you for your consideration of an ordinance on behalf of my client, McDonald's Real Estate Company. Uh, the ordinance, again, by way of reminder from the last meeting, seeks to vacate portions of a north-south public alley, which bisects my client's property, kind of commonly known by those of us in town as the McDonald's on Michigan Boulevard. The specific address is twenty-four oh four East Michigan Boulevard. And with me tonight, certainly much better being able to handle any specific comments that the council may have, we've got Sam Lebesnik. We've got Mary Meyer on behalf of McDonald's Corporation next to Sam. And then on the end, who is sitting next to me is Dan Olson from Watermark Engineering, and he's the engineer on the project. So any specific questions concerning this vacation request, any one of the three of them would be happy to answer any council questions. Thank you to our sponsors, Ms. Carnes, and good to see Mr. Simmons back. Um, thanks to the clerk's office who took care of noticing up this, both news dispatch, as well as to the adjoining property owner. And as always, Mr. Meyer for assisting me along the process. Um, as we generally outlined at the last meeting, um, and as you can see from the handout, um, which I think does a nice job of kind of outlining what we're asking for and what we're proposing kind of in exchange. Um, the areas in red are the portions of the alley that are not yet vacated that we are seeking to be vacated. Obviously, you can tell that prior portions of that north-south alley have been vacated. Um, and so we're seeking to kind of complete the process that began. I believe it may have started in the nineteen seventies and those other portions were vacated. In exchange, well, let's be specific, the vacation, if granted, with regard to the southerly red portion, the southerly alley portion, that property, as the one closest to the Boulevard, is surrounded completely by my clients. In other words, they would be the recipients of that parcel. However, the northern portion, farthest away from Michigan Boulevard, if the council were to grant our request, that property, that portion would be split. The western portion would go to my clients. The eastern portion would go to the owners of the property who have their home on Carroll Avenue. Um, so we would only be getting half of that vacated portion. In exchange, as you alluded to in the amendment, uh, we are willing to grant and draft, of course, with the assistance of Mr. Meyer, an easement to allow the existing sewer lines that fall within these, uh, to-be-vacated alley. In other words, there's already sewer lines in there. When the city owns the property, you don't really need an easement. But if that property were to be turned over, we would have to grant the city an easement, and we're happy to do so. In the course of sending this around for comments from other departments, we found out that the water department, in addition to the sanitary district, has water lines in that valley, in that alley. So that's what really the amendment was for. It was to take into account that the easement, whether we do one easement or two easements, would both allow for the continuation of the sewer lines as well as the continuation of the water lines. In addition, the water department asked my clients, not only would they create an easement in this portion to be vacated, but would they grant an easement for that portion you see kind of heading off towards Carroll Avenue that my clients already own? In other words, they own that property, but there are water mains in that. And that, we think that was a portion of an alley vacated many, many years ago. So my clients, even though it isn't affected by this vacation, are willing to extend the water department's easement to include property they already own. In addition to the easement, they are willing to dedicate and construct a new alley that heads off where this one would terminate off to the west. Um, it's been designed really long before my involvement in consultation with the sanitary district to make sure, I think there was a specific question about would a garbage truck be able to make that turn? And the answer is yes, a garbage truck would be able to make that turn. The ordinance has obviously been reviewed, as is this council's policy, by, uh, and, and reviewed by the mayor's office, the city attorney, water department, sanitary district, city engineer, police and fire, and the planning department. And to my knowledge, other than the comment that the water department had to include them in the easement, no one has objected to the request. So again, as to the details of the plan and the renovations that have been ongoing and the substantial investment that my clients have made in that site over the last year, they're all here to answer any questions that the council may have. Um, so I thank you for your time this evening, and again, welcome any questions that you may have.
Are there any questions from council members of Attorney McDonald or representatives?
Yeah, question.
Councilman Dabney?
Yes. Um, looking at this, at the drawing and living over there and being familiar with this, I lived over there for forty-plus years. Um, I'm seeing that this alley is gonna empty out into Ashland. And I'm trying to put the space in my head. And I talked to Mr. Lebesnik over there, and he said that they're gonna give up part of the, the parking lot in order to have this come out on the Ashland. So how close is your exit out of the McDonald's parking lot gonna be with this alley? Are they gonna be right next to each other? How's that, how's that work? And is there gonna be a buffer between your property and the?
Yes, so, well, thank you for the question. Thank you for allowing us to come in there. I think I know, or have met pretty much everybody here for anyone who I may not have. I'm Sam Lebesnik, uh, with my father Glenn, we own and operate, uh, this location. So I'm looking, if you'll allow me to give a bit of a guesstimate, uh, just by looking at the drawing, because I don't have any, uh, measurement, uh, apparatus with me. But at a glance, we will have a curb and a buffer zone at the back end of our parking lot for what we're giving. So it looks to me to be approximately?
Four to five, I'm sorry.
Oh, I stand corrected. We will have ten feet in between that there. So, and if you look, the majority of this land, uh, it's pretty easy to see for the amount of blue that's on there, which is what we would be vacating to the city versus us receiving fifty percent of the red on there. Um, you know, we'll be going through, and this will help us for traffic flow. This will help us for security, uh, and, uh, hopefully help us, uh, to improve our service to our customers and the community that we are surrounded by.
And another question, lighting? Uh, when that alley turns off, it comes and heads into Ashland. Gonna have proper lighting? And then I've always been concerned about that, just the way it is now, um, with the lighting back there.
So I completely understand. Um, so we have just, as a part of this remodel, we have updated, uh, two all-new LED, uh, lot lights uh, right around there. Because the vacation isn't done, unless, uh, my colleagues have there, I don't have an updated lighting plan for where it is. But we will continue to have, um, it is our, Glenn and my goal to have, uh, our parking lots light up like a beacon as much as we can, because quite frankly, it makes our customers feel safe, which increases our nighttime sales. Uh, it's, it's in both of us. We have mutual interests in, uh, making our, our customers and the community around us feel safe at our location. So, uh, while I don't have any specific information at my fingertips, uh, our interests are aligned there. I'm happy to remain for any other questions.
Any other questions of Mr. Lebesnik? Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
Yep. Anyone else from the public wish to speak on this ordinance?
Hello.
Hi.
My name's Gondoria Davis Mack.
Address, please.
Two ten North Carroll Avenue. I'm the residence that actually lives behind McDonald's, which they are talking about. This right here has been growing on for actually a couple of years. Um, they had approached us, um, three times to, uh, purchase part of our alley, which we didn't want to sell. Because we've always dealt with rodents that's coming from their trash to where their trash is located. It's in their back, but it's also in my backyard. So it's like, they've come to us on that part right there. And then other thing is, so since we've been saying, no, 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 we don't want to deal with it, and then with the people's trash, customers' trash, that's always in our yard, that we have to deal with and pick up all the time. So we've been saying no, okay? And so what they've done now is they went around to the city to say, oh, well, we're gonna do this easement thing to beautify the Boulevard or, or whatever they're trying to do right now. And then also, um, I talked to my mortgage company, and they said that they never did contact them as far as like buying any of their property, because we had just moved back into our home. I wanna say it was like a July, no, June of last year, because our home had caught on fire, so we had moved back in. But we have been considering on move, on relocating seller right home. So we have talked to our, uh, mortgage company and their attorneys. And they're saying that they're going to get in contact with the McDonald's and you guys and everything else, because what they're trying to do right now is crazy. And then with their trash, what they did now, they moved it from the back back there and moved it to the front. And then the other part is, with the reconstruction that they want to do, and yeah, they're giving up part of their parking lot. But the thing is, with the traffic that comes through that alley, if you come that wrong way, you're gonna take out my garage. You're gonna take out my property, my fencing. So I have nothing up there. You see what I'm saying? But I, I do have my, my garage, I have my fence. But you're proposing to try to give up or make it seem like, oh, well, I'm giving up part of my property to make it easement to where you can go out on Ashland. No, you're not. So I've been opposing it the whole time. So I've been there like worst nightmare. Okay, and like I said, I'm getting tired of it. And, um, I don't think it's right, the way they've done it. And on all three of those occasions, they have offered us money, but we didn't want the money. We wanted to where it is now. It just, there's nothing wrong with it. But the thing is, I already know how they're planning on doing it. They're gonna try to put their trash and everything back in my backyard again, which I deal with mice all the time. I've been fighting with the, uh, roaches, ants, all the time. I, I pay for, out of my pocket every year for things, you know? So I don't think it's fair that they get disapproved. Thank you.
You're welcome. Question for her, have a question for her.
Uh, Councilman Dabney?
Come on back. Ms. Mack, um, now when you said if they come in the wrong way, that they hit your garage, when you said wrong way, which way are you talking about coming from? Monroe or out of the?
From Monroe. If you come in from Monroe, you won't hit my garage and my fencing. But if you come in through Ashland way?
Off the Ashland, okay.
Oh, you're gonna tear it up. And then, and then it's like numerous times before, people have actually hit my garage before. I mean, not my garage, but my fence. So, and I've always replaced it every year faithfully. And it's gotten to the point now, I'm getting ready to move it back more to where no one keeps tearing it up. I mean, it's costing me like fifteen hundred dollars every time. And that adds up after a couple of years.
Councilman Beatry? Ma'am, does, does your garage right now sit in the easement?
It's two feet, we own part of the alley, the other part of the alley.
The easement?
Yes. I have pictures if you want to see.
Right. But, uh, well, let me rephrase.
Okay.
Does your garage sit in the alley now?
It, no, it doesn't sit in the alley, it faces the alley. I have pictures if you want to look at.
So, well, if the alley becomes an easement, why would cars hit it?
Because people come through the alley all the time. And if they go through Ashland, let's say, you're gonna have people that's gonna do the wrong thing. They may come in through Ashland, and if they come in through Ashland and go through, uh, go through the alley to go back down on Monroe, there's a good chance that they're gonna take out my garage and my fence again.
Even though it wouldn't be sitting in the alley or easement?
Right there. I have pictures I can show you. So I'm just saying.
Okay, I appreciate your, uh, comments. But I do have a question, because I was out there this afternoon with the two folks from, you know, McDonald's and the water, uh, uh, company. But where, where is, where I was shown where the alley's gonna turn, oh, would that be north to Ashland, right? You come up the alley and then you're gonna turn right, and that goes out to Ashland, correct? West, okay. All right, that, it, it seems to me like that, that turn right there, does it, doesn't even come close?
You don't have?
To where your alley's at.
You don't have very good drivers, trust me. They've taken out my fence, my back fence, every year. And they banned, this last year, because we weren't in our home, because our home had caught on fire, they actually vandalized my fence. Okay? But the thing is, they can still come through, trust me, and, and tear up my fence or my garage. Like I said, I have pictures if you wanna look at them. I didn't print them out or anything, but I do have pictures.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Any other questions? Okay. Ms. McDonald, if you wish to speak, come to the microphone.
I may speak briefly, and Mr. Lebesnik, and just to be clear, I think the council is, is clear, but maybe the public isn't clear. Neither McDonald's nor the Max own the alley. The alley is the city's property. So it's the city's to control. Uh, when my clients approached the Max, it wasn't to purchase their property. It was to see if they were interested in, if this were successful, assigning their half of the vacated alley, because they could have then made some slight modifications to the drive-through lane, parking, et cetera. So I know the council knows that, but I just want the public to be clear. The other thing I would indicate is based, and I'm sure Ms. Mack does have pictures, and I just pulled up. I, I mean, I'm familiar with that neighborhood, I grew up there. Um, I've gone to the McDonald's hundreds of times, and I think that the engineering and the Lebesnik family were very careful to design the new to-be-granted, uh, alley dedication to take into account the continued use of that garage by the Max. In other words, as I see it, and I have not been on their property, but you can see it from the existing alley and you can see it from Carroll Avenue, the garage has kind of a pass-through on what would be the northern side of the garage. And you can see in a Google picture that I did before the meeting that there's the ability, it would seem that you could drive from Carroll all the way to that alley. That portion of the alley isn't going to be vacated. That's the portion that will remain and that will hook up with the newly curved portion that would spill out onto, uh, Ashland instead of continuing on into the parking lot. And the benefit, I would think, to not only my clients, but the neighborhood would be, and certainly the patrons would be there. Right now, you've got a, I mean, that is a strange situation where you've essentially got an alley that feeds out not into a public street, but into a parking lot. So you've got people that are starting from the north heading down, and instead of ending up in a, in a, on a street, they end up in the middle of a parking lot. So I would think that is not only dangerous for people that are using the alley, because they've gotta kind of watch out for patrons who are bringing their kids into McDonald's, but it's certainly dangerous for the patrons of McDonald's who, you know, have to kind of keep an eye on not only the people parking, but now the potential of a garbage truck or anybody else that's, I assume, has to come through that parking lot, turn and either go onto the Boulevard or go over to Carroll Avenue, wherever. turn and either go onto the boulevard or go over to Carroll Avenue, wherever they egress right now. So, um, those are just my comments um for the public as much as for the council. I think Mr. Lebesnik may wanna speak to the issue of uh the garbage, even though it isn't necessarily germane to this particular issue.
Uh, so, thank you for having me back up. Um, to clarify, I, I was disturbed to hear that that was the concern. This is the first I'm being made aware of the concern for pests and other issues uh as a result of our garbage corral. I would say whether the alley vacation goes through or not, there's never been a contention for the placement of it. But either way, we do have a brand-new um corral being built. It'll be with all-new concrete, all-new brick and everything uh up to and above uh standards for the type of uh, for the type of building that that would be. And I do wanna clarify, the corral that we have in right now is just a temporary facility while we excavate and do concrete asphalt work. And that is not an intended permanent uh location for it, just in case there's any confusion. We did reinforce it because of the time that it's taken to do this. The original temporary one, we had, didn't hold up very well uh over the winter and the weather. So, this is our attempt, we put extra expense and time and energy into it. Again, as an attempt to better serve our customers and the communities that surround us.
I have a question, Ms. Lebesnik. On that, on that garbage corral, is it being moved from its present location? Is there a new one being built, correct?
Currently, right now, we have a temporary corral in and it's near the Carroll Ave side. Uh, simply because we needed to excavate the concrete and the asphalt underneath the site um while they're going through there. And we have uh, we have heavy equipment there doing that as we speak. The uh, the general location will be, was before and will be again, uh, this was prior to making an extension to the back of the building, at the back of our building. It, it is in the same general area of our parking lot. It had to be moved to the side because the building is now longer than it used to be. So, it's just simply on the other side of that. And, but it will result in a completely new uh facility uh for our refuse. And uh, but the location of that, whether the alley location goes through or not, it'll be within, I'm gonna say eight or ten feet, it's gonna be in the same general location, just a few feet to the left or right.
Okay, thank you, sir. Is there anyone else from the public that wishes, wishes to speak on this subject? Having none. Public uh comment is now closed. And we, is there any uh further council comment? Any further council comment? Any further council comment? Having none, then this ordinance will be held over for third reading at our next council meeting. Ms. Leva, our next ordinance on second reading by title only, without objection, please.
An ordinance on second reading by title only, amending the municipal code to provide for payment of members of the commission for women for attending commission meetings. And this is introduced by Councilman Fitzpatrick.
And does the author have anything he would like to add at this time?
Not at this time.
Is there anyone from the public that wishes to speak on this ordinance?
Yes, my name is um Fay Moore, and I live at five-one-five Gray Street, Michigan City. I am uh one of the members of the Women's Commission. And what we do is, uh, our main thing that we do is give out scholarships to women that are uh having issues with their finances, maybe going to school. Like, we've given money for the bullying program at Michigan City High School. We've given money to teachers that have got, had to go back and recertify. We've given money to um help uh families that had, uh, had to have some health, had some health issues that they couldn't afford all of the expenses for their health. Uh, we primarily help women because we are underpaid and underserved in Michigan City and all over the United States. But um, so I do hope that this um does pass because we donate most of our money, but any, any money we receive, we do fundraisers throughout the year to get raised that money. And the mayor has given us money to help um have the money to be able to issue for the scholarships and for the um things that we've done in the community.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public which should speak on this ordinance? Anyone else from the public which should speak on this ordinance? Public comments now closed. Any further council comments on this ordinance? Any further council comments? Any further council comments? This ordinance will be held over for third reading at our next council meeting. Ms. Leva, our next ordinance on second reading by title only, without objection, please.
An ordinance on second reading by title only, approving additional appropriation in the budget of the Boyd Development Fund to provide funding for engineering costs to repair the catwalk on the pier at Washington Park. This is introduced by Councilman Stimley, Councilwoman Carnes, Councilman Prozvolinski, and Councilman Dabney.
Thank you very much. And tonight, we will have a formal public hearing on this uh matter. Do the authors have anything, do the authors have anything that they would like to uh add? Authors have anything they'd like to add? Do the authors have anything they'd like to add? Does the public have anything that they'd like to uh say on this ordinance? Any public comment? Any public comment? Having none, the formal public hearing is closed. Is there any further council comment? Any further council comment? Any further council comment? This ordinance will be held over to our next council meeting for third reading. And Ms. Nylav, I, or, I'm sorry. Ms. Leva? Our one and only ordinance on third reading by title only, without objection, please.
An ordinance on third reading by title only, approving additional appropriation in the budget of the Riverboat Fund to provide funding for roof repairs at the city's emergency management building. And this is introduced by Councilwoman Carnes and co-sponsored by Council President Prozvolinski.
And would the author like to add anything?
Uh, I'd just like to say that the city's emergency management for saves the city, uh, lots of money every year by um, uh, traffic, um, uh directing traffic for different events, and they're all volunteers. And um, I think we need to help them out and get their, their building repaired.
Thank you. Uh, one thing I'd like to add is that, uh, as Councilwoman Carnes alluded to, that the emergency management organization actually saves the city somewhere in the neighborhood, I believe, with seventy to eighty thousand dollars a year in overtime through the uh, through the police department, by not having to have officers out doing traffic control and things like that at uh events in the, in the uh city. Uh, the other thing, I had the opportunity to actually be in that neighborhood latter part of last week and had a uh good look at the building. And it certainly does need uh these repairs to be done. Uh, the fascia on the outside and the soffit is uh coming off the building and it needs to be uh repaired. So, this is money well spent. Uh, with that being said, uh, there was a formal, formal public hearing held on April the sixteenth. And is there anyone from the public that wishes to speak on this ordinance? Anyone from the public which should speak on this ordinance? Anyone from the public which should speak on this ordinance? Having none? Anyone from the council wish to speak on us? Councilman Beatry?
No, no approve.
Support.
There was a count, or a motion to approve by Councilman Beatry and seconded by Councilwoman Carnes. Ms. Leva, on the vote, please.
Mr. Prozvolinski?
Aye.
Ms. Silvas?
Aye.
Mr. Simmons?
Aye.
Mr. Stimley?
Aye.
Mr. Dabney?
Aye.
Ms. Carnes?
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
And Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
We have nine in favor and none opposed.
Thank you, Ms. Leva. We are now done with the ordinances. Uh, we now are on to unfinished business. And there is a vote tonight we're gonna have. Uh, the common council has two appointments to the Sustainability Commission. One appointment is for one year initially and one appointment is for two years. And the nominees for the two-year appointment is Andrea Janz Davis. And the one-year appointment is for Nancy Mullenauer. Uh, and I believe since we only have uh one person going for each slot, uh, we don't have to have a individual vote. I think the council, if it's okay with the council, we just vote in unison and, and appoint the people. So, for the two-year appointment, uh, everyone in favor of Andrea Janz Davis being appointed, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, none. And for the one-year uh appointment of Nancy Mullenauer, everyone are, signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, uh, Andrea Janz Davis and Nancy Mullenauer are now appointed to the Sustainability Commission. Congratulations. All right. Uh, nominations. The common council has three appointments to the Youth Leadership Commission, two appointments for one year initially and one appointment for two years. So, for the two-year appointments, no, the two appointments for the one-year, uh nominations are now open. Are there any nominations for the one-year appointment?
I'd like to nominate Nathan Patrick.
Support.
Nathan Patrick has been nominated with a second. Are there any other nominations for the one-year appointment? Any other nominations for the one-year appointment? Councilman Beatry?
I don't have a nomination, but I remembered our last meeting, I brought up this question of whether we were going to ask the high schools to give us suggestions on those leaders that they felt would be good for these positions. And if my memory serves, uh, Councilman Fitzpatrick was gonna contact the high schools?
Uh, I contacted uh Marquette because our appointments go from Marquette. And I um took them one of the application forms and they were working to uh submit that to the students and get them, those uh applications submitted.
How are we handling Michigan City High School then?
Yeah, the Michigan City High School appointments are our mail appointments. Um, I can reach out to them so we could get some more applications in. And I've been mentioning uh through other avenues to have applications, so.
Okay, so for the uh one-year appointment, uh, we have Nathan Patrick so far. Then we have uh one appointment for a two-year uh position is, and nominations are now open for that. Is there any nominations for the two-year appointment?
There weren't any applications filed. The rules are that, you know, nobody somebody that don't put out an application, Nathan Patrick threw out an application.
Right, okay.
So, you have to wait.
Okay. All right. Okay, so we are done with the nominations for that. Uh, approval, uh, from the, this is from that, from the, not from that, from the Energy Systems Group. Uh, partial acceptance for their Certificates for Energy Savings Project, the airport lighting, uh, central services lighting, golf course lighting, Patriot Park lighting, Pullman Park basketball court lighting and Pullman Park skate park lighting. Uh, Mr. Myers, does this require a vote? Is that what we're doing here with this?
Yes, as you recall, there were, well, after we added the solar system, I think there was something in the area of fourteen different projects.
Yeah.
And these are, excuse me, uh, six of them have been completed. And at this point, uh, as you know, from the documents that were submitted, not only did ESG review what the contractors did and approve it, but the uh contractor, Mr. Kirk, excuse me, the engineer from DLZ that the city hired to monitor for the city, also have approved these six items as being complete. So, under the, uh, and they've been turned over to the city and the city's using them. So, under the rules of contracting for this type of construction project, the warranties on the equipment and whatever's installed begin to run when they're put into service and accepted by the owner. And in this case, that would be the council. And they are being used. Now, if they weren't being used, we could say, we could wait, but they are being used, which is why it's necessary for the council to vote to accept. The partial refers to the fact that it's only six out of fourteen.
Okay, thank you. Uh, is there any objection that the council uh vote, you know, as, as a group? You know, yea or nay on this, or do we wanna go individual approvals? Is it okay if we do it as a group? All right. Okay, everyone in uh, in favor of approving the projects that I mentioned, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? All right, those are approved. New business.
Mr. President, before we go on, I just wanna distinguish and more for the public than for you, uh, that the guarantee, the warranty for energy savings doesn't start running until all fourteen, for obvious reasons, till all the projects are done. Because the guarantee is based on all of these projects being installed. And there will be a quote "final acceptance" unquotes for the whole project, once all of the projects are completed. And that's when, when we'll start the year for verifying that the guaranteed amount of energy savings are being saved.
Thank you, Ms. Myers. Under new business, FYI, the council has one appointment to the Michigan City Economic Development Revolving Loan Fund Committee. The incumbent presently is Mr. James Strelleke, whose term expires June ninth, twenty nineteen. And another FYI from Mayor Mear is requesting the advice and consent of the members of the Michigan City Common Council regarding his appointment of Mr. Roger Potrats as a member of the Michigan City Historic Review Board. And at this time, we now open the meeting up to the public. Are there any public comments? None, whatever comments you, you may have to whatever subject matter you have, just uh your name and address, okay?
Ellie Hartman. I live at two-thirty Fogarty Street in Michigan City. Two-thirty Fogarty Street, that's correct. I'm here representing a group called the Canada Park Neighbors.
Okay, you speaking to the microphone?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm here representing a group called the Canada Park Neighbors. Um, and we're here because we want to challenge an ordinance that was recently passed. That's ordinance forty-five oh nine. Uh, this ordinance changed the uh zoning for a piece of property on, that's on Lake Street between Felton and Fogarty Street. And that zoning was changed to R one D. Uh, the zone, that areas, that plot of land is also referred to as lakeside townhomes by the potential developer. The reason we're challenging this is because we live there and uh when the zoning was changed, none of us in the neighborhood knew about it. Um, one of us got a notice that there was going to be a public hearing. Uh, but nobody else got any information about that the planning committee was recommending it or that uh, uh, the zoning change was gonna be presented at the common council. We didn't know any of that. It was only after the ordinance passed and we read about it in the paper that we knew that it was effective or that it was there at all. Um, and we live around it. Uh, I'm attached to this uh document that I passed out, a letter from John and Suheini, who live at the entrance of what that uh potential development would be. Um, we're requesting that in the future, the council consider um publishing any news or changes to ordinances on the E, on the E website um because they're hard to find. Um, you have to buy a whole bunch of newspapers and read them from front to back to find what you're looking for. And if you just put them on the website, it would be easy to do. Um, anyway, so we went back and we read the minutes and we were pretty shocked to hear that the ordinance was passed in one meeting, one reading. And um, we were really surprised about that. Um, and disappointed with it. Uh, this project has the potential to affect a lot of us and a lot- Uh, this project has the potential to affect a lot of us in a lot of ways. Our traffic, our parking, our water and sewage, the flora and fauna in the area, our real estate values, our insurance premiums, and just the neighborhood atmosphere are some of the things that will be affected by this huge change. We requested in the future, uh our councilman Bryant Dabney alert us to any changes in our ward. Um, so we're just kind of stymied by this. We don't understand why the common, why the zoning council felt that putting this this development, which is um, it's a, our area is a single-family residential area near the beach. Um, this development is a lot of small lots together in a very crowded, in an area. Um, so we, we're, we're kind of stymied as to why the zoning council felt that this, it's referred to as an urban development when they're that small and that crowded together. Um, why, why that was appropriate for our neighborhood. Um, we didn't understand why there would be a match in our area for that. Uh, we thought that wouldn't there be more tax dollars made by building a single, single-family residences instead of a lot of these small duplexes? And, and wouldn't there be less infrastructure money spent uh for single-family residences? Um, and then the next are just a series of questions that we don't understand why or how this happened. Uh, was there any discussion about the traffic or the water or the sewer use? Um, I've attached a map at the very last part of the document there. Um, a huge issue in our area is uh traffic. Uh, there's a lot of it. Um, there's a lot of people trying to get from the beach and the park to Route twelve, and they drive through our area. Um, and the street that they drive up mo, very frequently, well, they drive up two streets frequently, that's Kruger and Center Street. Uh, then they also drive up um Lake Street and they turn right on Felton Street. And Lake and Felton is the corner where this new uh development is supposed to be sitting. And there's a lot of traffic there. There's a lot of buses that go through to uh the, the grade school that's in the area. Um, there's a lot of trucks, semi-tractor trailers that are going to uh Well McLean. Um, it's a very busy area. Recently, we spoke to the uh traffic officer uh on Fogarty Street last summer. There was no way you could get a, an ambulance or a police car down the street because there, there were cars parked on both sides of the street. You had to drive down one of the other side streets. You just couldn't get through. Um, and we're working on making the parking on that street one-sided. Just, just, I won't go into a whole lot of detail. There's really a lot of traffic there, more than our streets can handle. And, and this new development will add, I'm guessing it would be five units, five duplexes, so that's ten units, and if two people live in each, that's ten more car, that's ten more cars. Um, we don't know anything about the development at all. It's, would be built on very old property that's been standing there for a long time. There is an oak savanna on, on the property. Uh, we don't know what the architecture will look like. Um, there's three large, single-family homes adjacent to this. Um, and I don't think they have any idea that this big duplex is going to be built there. Um, we wonder where the residents and their guests will park. Uh, Felton Street, at Lake Street, somebody had a barbecue on Sunday and it was gridlocked. Couldn't get through. So, God forbid, two people have a barbecue the same Sunday. Um, we've told, been told that there's no, not going to be any infrastructure changes um due to lack of funding. Uh, and we're wondering how, how these new residents and us and guests will walk to the beach and park and zoo because there aren't contiguous sidewalks. Um, anyway, and there are sewage issues. Uh, there's a sewer between Felton and Fogarty Street that gets cleaned out once a week. So, if ten more units are built there, what's going to happen then? Anyway, we're very disappointed that this ordinance got passed in one meeting and that we were not included in, in this, in this uh ordinance. Um, and we would like to work with you on um getting this so that we're all in agreeance, agreement. We're not against, we're not against building at all. We, we appreciate it. We've had a couple of new businesses open in the area, uh Doon Billy's Beach Cafe and uh Cool Runnings Restaurant are two new places that are doing a great business. It's a fun place to live, kind of a funky place to live. We like that. We want to keep it that way. Um, and this new development is just too congested for, for the area.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Mr. President and councilpeople. My name's Emily Reth and I'm the director at the Barker Mansion. Um, previously, I was not able to give my report um for the city departments. Um, and I just wanted to inform you all that we are back after our restoration and after our industrial cleaning. Um, we opened for tour for the first time in a very long time um this past Tuesday. Uh, so we're able to go through with our summer hours, um Memorial Day through Labor Day, and uh we're looking forward to having more people in there. Um, I just wanted to ask any questions. Um, I'm very open to talking about uh the process of that restoration, what went on for the cleaning, why we are closed for so long. Uh, and so I just wanted to open that up for any questions.
Yeah, I'd be interested on the cleaning and the restoration real quickly, you know, not a twenty-minute dissertation, but.
Of course, sir.
Yeah.
Um, so, the process has been going on longer than I have been at my post. Um, I'll be there a year at the end of the month. Um, so, the restoration process has gone throughout the entire household, um, and it's mostly with the plaster work. Um, the ornate plaster on the first floor, uh that was done over the winter. Um, what was an issue was on the gash of the third floor, we had uh black mold and um quite a bit of lead paint. Um, and so, we needed to remediate the mold. We needed to make sure that our staff were taking care of that public health and safety was our number one priority at that point. Um, of course, with being on the National Register for certain places, that does put us in an interesting position for how do you deal with um mold, with lead paint, um and with the plaster work? But yet, there are certain regulations in order to stay on that board. Um, it's an, an award given by the Department of the Interior, um which we're happy to have. Uh, and you have to meet a certain number of requirements uh for historical integrity. And so, to be able to do our restoration process and keep that historical integrity um was pretty significant for us. Uh, during that process, um we wanted to make sure that everything was, was safe, so we had a gentleman from OSHA come in. We also had um people from Americo, um Zach Heine, I believe, was our uh contact for that. Um, for further details, you can also contact um Amber LaPeach, who is the city attorney, uh for more details. Um, through that process, everyone was really wonderful in making sure that we were taken care of, that the mansion was taken care of, um as it's one of our city's pride and joys, uh to be honest. It's a historical monument that um needs more attention, it needs a better budget to take care of it for the future, um which, don't we all? Uh, and we want to make sure that we are able to do our programs. We have a full slate of programs ahead, our staff. Um, we can always use more staff, but uh we're going to be struggling very much so in order to get all of that done. Um, if we did not have the restoration, if we did not have the funding that we did and the support from the city. Um, so, all that to say, uh, we are now up and running. Um, we hope to have uh multi-generational events, uh from over twenty-one events to kids' summer camps, um after-school programs, um lectures. We now have a podcast that has episodes every Friday. And so, all of that is done in-house. Um, I have a staff of three, and so the staff and myself uh do quite a bit in order to make sure that things are taken care of. Um, I thank you all for your support, um your commitment to public health and safety, and um I appreciate uh what you guys are doing. So, thank you.
Okay, well, thank you very much for your report and that explanation. Anyone else from the public who should speak this evening?
My name's Dave Augustus, uh two eighteen East Tenth Street here in Michigan City. Uh, I'd like to preface my remarks with a couple of comments. Uh, one is, I'm all for energy efficiency. I've retrofitted hundreds of fixtures at my facility to uh, you know, through CFLs, through different other uh lighting sources, and finally now, I'm retrofitting all fixtures to LEDs where I can maintain their uh design aesthetics. And second thing is, sometimes you have to strike a balance between aesthetics, utility, and your ideal. And that means to get a acceptable product, sometimes you can't check all the boxes of your wish list. So, that being said, Saturday morning, I wake up, go out to my car. Marquis Selectric is there modifying the light fixture right across from my house. And uh didn't think anything about it, you know, about that they were changing out the light bulbs. So, I come back later that evening and I see what you see in front of you now. You see a, what looks to me like, say, Jughead's Hat with lights underneath it. Uh, previously, the, that light fixture had, had a nice globe. The globe was part of the design. You know, the fixture was not designed around the globe, but the globe was part of the design. Now, it doesn't. Uh, I think that diminishes its design, and uh I don't think it's an acceptable diminution of that design. And uh, second, we got an issue now that it's very dark. It's dark on the block that I live on. It's dark on Ninth Street now, and the lighting itself is inadequate. I know that you could speak to law enforcement people, and they'll say, one of the greatest deterrents to cr, crime at night is adequate lighting. Uh, I don't think that this is adequately lighting the uh area right now. And, you know, you should take your, take a drive by there tonight and take a look. You have the opportunity now to compare and contrast the new with the old, and you'll see what I'm talking about. So, uh, may come as a surprise to you that there's crime in Elston Grove, you know? Uh, my, my car, my truck in the past four years have been broken into five times. And part of that's my, my fault because I forgot to lock them. But five times in four years is a lot for one person. And granted, the lighting that was there didn't stop that. But say if it's darker, you got more people crawling about. Will that increase? You know, it's, it's hard to say, but I would venture to guess that nighttime crime might be an issue. So, what I'm asking is that the council use whatever mechanism they can to delay further implementation of these retrofits until, you know, you get more citizen input. Uh, we're going to be discussing it at the uh Elston Grove Neighborhood Association next Wednesday. And uh in the past, Redevelopment Commission had worked pretty closely with them about all the changes that was made. I'm not here representing them right, right now, but I am, you know, a member of the, the association. So, I would hope that we could delay further implementation until we get their inputs, you know, more residential inputs. I understand the vote was taken last week where some folks felt that we could just do, you know, remove the globe and that would be fine. Other folks felt that those globes should stay and uh I think you might see, if you go take a look, that doesn't look what, like what it used to be. And the lighting is inadequate now, and maybe you should stop it until we can have further input. It's a big project, and before you get to the point of no return, I think you, you need to get some citizen input.
Thank you, sir.
Alrighty.
Yeah, thank you.
Further that, what mechanism is available to you to stop further implementation?
Well, a, actually, right now, we don't have give and take during public comment.
Okay.
But under council comments, which is coming up next, if a councilperson wants to address your concerns, then we can do that.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
My name is Larry Celestri. I live at three one four Kenwood Place, uh and uh I was on the Redevelopment Commission uh for seven years. Uh, I was involved with the completion of the uh Elston Grove uh project. And I, I know that a lot of money was spent on uh selecting uh aesthetic uh light fixtures. And uh you're all familiar with them. And uh the, the issue now is uh whether there's to be a globe or uh not, not a globe. And uh, the uh, uh, I, I drove, uh, the, the, the lights have been completed now on Ninth and Tenth Street between uh Michigan Boulevard and Pine. Uh, there's, the globe has been removed per uh the vote of the council on uh March fifth. Uh, there, there was a comparison uh at uh Michigan Boulevard uh on, I think it was Seventh Street or Eighth Street, uh where a demonstration was set up uh with the uh uh lead flat panel. It's a circuit board. Uh, it's flat. And uh there, there was a, uh, two, two pedestrian scale lights, uh one with the globe and one without the globe. And the council voted to have uh no globe. Now, the advantage of no globe is uh that uh, that there's no glare. Uh, it, it, the light is cast horizontally for a long distance. Uh, I, I did see these uh in the dark uh a couple of days ago. And it's the equivalent of uh lo, looking down the uh street and, and uh it's equal uh in brightness uh to the headlight, oncoming headlights. So, uh, you know, that, that's glare. It makes it difficult to see. But uh, uh, the aesthetic issue is uh mostly a daytime uh i- issue. The globes are transparent. And uh you actually have to uh uh look for it to notice that, that uh on uh Eighth Street uh there, there's a, a globe, a glass globe, uh a, as opposed to uh on Ninth or Tenth Street that there is no globe. You would, you would never notice this unless, unless you're really looking for it. And uh, with or without a globe, Elston Grove uh now has the uh most aesthetically pleasing uh fixtures uh of any neighborhood in uh Michigan City. The uh, as far as the uh light uh intensity uh at night, that's a separate issue. Uh, you, when these were installed, uh, uh, back in probably uh two thousand uh twelve or, or eleven, uh, I would never have uh approved these uh particular lights. The, the color temperature, uh, for, for example, these fluorescent lights are probably about uh four thousand five hundred or even higher. It's equivalent to a, a noon daylight uh light. And uh, that, that's appropriate indoors, uh but uh the, these uh canned lights in the back, you can tell they're more of an amber color, that would be actually a better uh for uh night visibility um in, in darkness. Because the uh noon daylight light uh will uh wipe out your uh ability to see into shadows or uh uh, for example, I, I had a hard, driving, uh, I had a hard time reading uh streetlights, uh the street signs uh from some angles due to the uh glary uh lights that uh were cast by the globe. So, it will actually, the, the uh NIPSCO is replacing their streetlights uh from the Illinois border all the way out to South Bend somewhere. And uh they had a scientist uh from Purdue University, uh Dr. PhD, Robert Kramer. Uh, he uh determined that uh the uh three thousand Kelvin color temperature uh with a flat panel is actually better for the environment, better for uh visibility. Uh, and uh these lights are very similar in configuration in Elston Grove to uh uh what uh Dr. uh Robert. what, uh, Dr. Uh, Robert Kramer, uh, uh, determined through, through his research. But, uh, I, I think it's a ma- a matter of, uh, just surprised to see the change. There were, uh, uh, quite a few complaints, uh, I remember, uh, when, uh, these, uh, daylight white metal halide, uh, lights went in originally, and, uh, that's the, uh, anytime you change streetlights, there's going to be complaints. Uh, these, uh, new ones are, uh, better for, uh, the environment, they're better for safety because there's less glare, uh, they're better for your night vision because you, uh, will, uh, be able to see into the darker shadows, there's a lower, uh, lower contrast. With a high contrast, you, uh, it's either white or, uh, uh, kind of a black or, you know, if you're looking into, uh, a gangway or a, uh, behind a car, and, uh, and, uh, so for night vision, uh, the, uh, the, the more amber color is, is, uh, an improvement, and, uh, I think it's just a matter of, uh, surprise that, that the change took place. Uh, there's been a lot of research, and, uh, these are, uh, safe, good for the environment, and i- in fact, good, better for human health. Uh, you, you probably all hear all the time, uh, don't, uh, look at your computers before you go to sleep, that, uh, you know, it's because, uh, uh, it takes a couple hours to, uh, uh, for your hormones, uh, to, uh, kick in, uh, have appropriate sleep. If you got a daylight noon color, uh, streetlight shining in your bedroom window, you're never going to sleep properly. But the, the new lights are, uh, good, good, uh, according to the American Medical Association, a twenty sixteen study, uh, that, uh, they recommend three thousand Kelvin or, or lower, which these are. But the issue is the globe, the globe, uh, is part of the problem, uh, of the old lights, and it's just a matter of aesthetic and, uh, surprise that, that they've changed. And in fact, with or without the globe, I w- I would, uh, recommend you do drive, uh, Eighth and Ninth Street, uh, to compare the, the globe or no globe, and unless you're really looking for it, you, nobody's going to notice. Thank you.
Yes. We're still under public comment.
We're all doing respect, Larry, and, uh, I've gone back and forth with him on this issue. Uh, I live there. I know how bright and how illuminated the shadows were prior to these fixtures. I see them every night. I walk my dog at night, I seen them every night, and it is definitely less illuminated. And you will see that when you go, if you go tonight, you drive through the two d- you know, you have a chance to compare and contrast them. You can see whether you like the new look or whether you like the lack of illumination. I, I don't, don't imagine you would like that, but, you know, you'll see the difference.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, color temperature notwithstanding, a, a higher Kelvin temperature does give you a sharper image at night, and, um, you know, I don't advocate for anything that would be, say, harmful for anyone, but these light poles, they're ten to twelve feet off the ground, they're not the high ones, so you are seeing, you know, you, you're, you're seeing the light pole as you walk, you see the absence of the globe, and, uh, this will lead to possibly a, uh, a, a, you know, diminishing of perceived value in the neighborhood because, because I'm telling you, they do not look as good as they did. Okay?
You know what? Yes, sir, thank you. Anyone else from the public which should speak on any subject?
Larry Silvestri, three one four, uh, Kenwood Place. Um, if, uh, you want to see the best example of, uh, lighting in Michigan City today, it is in the new, uh, parking, West Parking Lot in Washington Park. Those are two thousand seven hundred Kelvin, down, shielded, uh, you'd, as, uh, anecdotal or, uh, just to your own personal, uh, experience, you can read a newspaper clearly anywhere in that parking lot, the light is even, there's no, uh, bright, uh, or dim spots, but if you walk seventy-five feet out of, out of that, it's dark, a- as it should be. There's no reason to illuminate beyond the base of the, of the next pole. So I would encourage you all to, uh, uh, see the parking lot in the West Parking Lot, but between the, uh, Coast Guard and, uh, uh, Fish Camp, uh, in Washington Park, and take a look at that lighting. The, uh, Elston Grove, uh, could not be complete, completely redone and move all the poles like, uh, you know, the, these poles went in new, uh, and, and were appropriately placed, but, uh, in Elston Grove, the poles might be a little bit further apart, uh, you know, they're just not, it's not possible to, uh, uh, completely illuminate, uh, every square inch of, uh, of that, but still, Elston Grove is, uh, also maybe, uh, the second best example of proper lighting af- after the, uh, conversion is done. But, yeah, I would, I would, uh, encourage you all to look at the, uh, West Parking Lot in, uh, Washington Park. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public which should speak on any subject?
Hi, Steve Champagne, uh, two twenty Fogarty Street. I'm here with some of the other residents of the Canada Park area who felt blindsided by the passage of ordinance forty-five oh nine. Uh, Ellie has already elaborated on some of the more tangible of our concerns, but I kind of wanted to just give a perspective on having moved here in two thousand eight, uh, very much by accident. We drove up from the Carmel region down by Indy, I don't even remember exactly why, but we, we got all the way to Washington Park and we were like, oh my God, where did this area come from? This is amazing, and saw just tons of potential here, especially on the north side, uh, but we lived on Washington Street for about a year between Tenth and Eleventh, there's a big white building across from the old Hart Institute, um, and we thought, well, if we're going to buy a house, where would we want to live in this area? And we wound up on Fogarty Street, and, uh, you know, it's old, our house was built in two, uh, nineteen eighteen, uh, and there's a lot there that i- in my mind makes it unattractive to become what I feel it really could be. I mean, there's still the factory there, there's that, all that boat storage, uh, there's B and E around the backside of the hill, all that. If, if you can imagine that gone and what that area could be in terms of the terrain with the dunes there, uh, the protected land, the Wa- the Washington Park right across the streets, and I feel like we're already sort of starting to see that with dune bellies and cool runnings, the kinds of really neat little places that could be in and around that area. To me, uh, multifamily housing is like giving up on that sort of thing. It doesn't, it doesn't fit what that area could be. So even if there's nothing that can be done about that ordinance at this point, I just want to kind of get the message out that in the future, when there's decisions being made about that area, let's think, you know, as far as we can in terms of what a really amazing that area that, that could be along the lake there. I mean, there's going to be the double track, it's got great access to and from Chicago, uh, got the lakefront there, uh, so that's, it's just a lot of emotion, but, uh, wanted to make that point for when there's future talk of what to do with things in that area.
Okay, thank you, sir. Anyone else from the public which should speak on any subject? Anyone else from the public which should speak on any subject? Anyone else from the public which should speak on any subject? Public comments is now closed. Council comments, Councilman Davy?
Real quick, my word is out tonight, Elston Grove in, I still call it Hungry Hollow down there, but, um, we've had email exchanges, I've met with a couple of people out there, and we've talked about this, and as I told you and, and promised you guys, um, I have put the little guardrails in place now so that when things are coming up, even before they may get to the council level, if they're in the planning commission, board zoning appeals and things like that, they're going to notify me so I can notify you, um, uh, so you can get into those meetings, actually even before it gets to the council level. So I told you I would do that, and that has been done. Um, and as you, you, we all know, we're going to be meeting with the actual developer, and a lot of those questions that Ellie had, uh, tonight, I believe they would be able to answer those. I can't speak for the, the person there, but I'm sure they'll be able to answer a lot of those questions. Um, so I hope we get some real clarification, and, um, as I've told you all, in, in the email, I understand, um, you know, how anxious, you know, with, with these things happening, uh, coming up out there, but hopefully we can get this straightened out, especially after the meeting with the developer, uh, moving forward. Mr. Augustus, I will be at that meeting on the fifteenth, and, uh, we'll have a chance to discuss the lighting again, so, all right, thank you.
Councilwoman Carnes?
Uh, yes, I would also like to address, uh, Canada Park neighbors. Uh, you did have a question of why I recommended the zoning variance when, um, I don't live in the first floor. It came through the Plan Commission, and I am the council liaison from the Plan Commission, and on February twenty-sixth, we did have a public hearing, and there were, uh, extensive questions about that, uh, development and, uh, recommendations from, uh, the Planning Department as far as the rezoning, and if you would want to review the, the minutes of the two twenty-six, twenty nineteen meeting of the Plan Commission, um, possibly some of your questions would be answered. Thank you.
Any other council comments?
I have, uh, just a couple. Pardon? Oh, Councilman Fitzpatrick, go ahead.
Uh, just wanted to touch on one thing. Everyone knows it was, uh, election day yesterday, and, uh, there were some concerns about, uh, armed police at the schools for, uh, the polling places and even with the K-nines all out in front of, uh, a couple of polling places. Uh, because those are our schools, and it was a school day, and schools were open, our schools are usually secured, and with the schools being open for polling, uh, they felt the need that armed, um, police were, their presence was necessary in, in those situations. Um, I personally believe that, um, the schools should not be utilized for polling places. There are a lot of other facilities that would be better suitable to have elections held that, um, even having, uh, early voting at the courthouse, I think, is a, a conflict because it, it kind of, uh, misuses that space when it's, it's conducted for legal, uh, hearings, and then people are running in and out or out in front of the courthouse because of, uh, there being an election. So, uh, those are issues that definitely need to be addressed with the county clerk as well as the county commission, so anyone, um, wanting to address their, their concerns with that, that's the way, uh, where it needs to be directed to, so I just wanted to touch on that, thank you.
I'm sorry. To go, uh, with the no globes and LEDs, the flats, so that's how we wound up in that decision. There were a couple lights on, uh, Eighth and Michigan Boulevard, one, the globe was taken off, no, one, you know, Michigan Boulevard has all globes anyway, so you, you compared it to that, or you compared it to the LED with no globe, and that's how the council voted, that they wanted the flat with the no globe. Uh, whether that decision's going to be changed or not, I have no idea, uh, but I will go and take a ride up and down Ninth and Tenth Street to see what it looks like, because I didn't, I didn't, I didn't know that that's how much of the project's been done already, so I guess that'd be a great comparison now that you have that much lighting, so, you know, we'll, 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 hold on, we'll, we'll go from, we'll, we'll go from there, and then I will, uh, you know, call the mayor up and tell him, he wanted me to respond to you, so, you know, I'm talking to you now, and I'm doing my part, and I'll go back to him and, you know, see what they decide to do, and then we'll go, we'll go from there. Okay?
Decide, the, the contract is with the council. Okay. The council controls, and that's why you had a vote on what kind of lighting you want, but it, you know, of course, the council could change its mind if it wanted to, if it wants to.
Okay, I'm just saying, Mr. Myers, that I'll respond back to the mayor since he responded to me, uh, but then I'll also, you know, I'll give you a call, and we'll see if Mr. Legler needs to be called in, and we'll take a look at, uh, the issue and make sure that it's fairly analyzed for the neighbors that are in the neighborhood. Okay? All right, with that being said, any other?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Second by Councilman Fitzpatrick, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, those opposed, council meetings adjourned.